Good morning. The Board of Appeal for January 30th is now in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. And also to let you know that in conformance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being livestreamed. If you're here to speak either in support or in opposition to the project, please put your name and address on the record. And give us new information each time whenever you're here to speak on a project. We are here to fact find. We know there's been a community process, but sometimes there's new information that we get at the meetings, so that's what we'd like to hear about. I think that's it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of December 12th and December 19th of 2018. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm calling the first case for extensions. Calling BOA 266-860-20 Veale Street. Is Veale Street here? Call that one off to the side. Calling the next case for extension. There are four. Calling BZC 32997-15 Mallett Avenue, BZC 32998-14 New England Avenue, BZC 32999-18 to 20 New England Avenue, and BZC 33000-17 Mallett Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Secretary, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Mackenzie and Associates, 183 State Street, Suite 6, Boston 02109.
So, Mr. Feaster, tell us what's going on.
Well, Madam Chair, this matter has been before the board previously, and the variances were granted. The...my client, Codman Square NDC, and I have the project manager for this matter, Entia Izaza Figueroa, they have been attempting to seek financing. I think they're very close to securing it. I believe it's even next month that they would be having it, but because the extension expired next month, we thought it was just advisable to come before this board and just get an additional one-year extension in the event that something does occur and the financing is not put in place by next month.
Okay.
Just a question, have you selected a general contractor for the project?
We have not gone out to bid yet for contracting. We did get funding through DHCD for all of our sources in the fall.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend one year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, Board Final Arbiter. Calling BOA 733-788-819 East Fifth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Haley, 819 East Fifth Street. I was in here this past October, received approval to convert my single-family home into a two-family home, the reason being that my wife and I just had a baby. We wanted to add a unit in the basement for our in-laws or nanny to help take care of the child. In that time, I've actually...my wife is now expecting a second, and we realized that the space is better going to serve us, not as a two-family residence, but to still have the unit down there, but to have us...to have access to the unit, because the baby's toys are down there, but we still need a spot for the nanny and in-laws to, you know, bathe, to prepare meals for the baby. My wife and I both work from home, so we don't want them coming upstairs all the time. So I'm seeking approval to keep my family as a single-family residence, to continue to put the unit in the basement, but instead of having it be a completely separate unit, to have the unit be contiguous with our house, so we would have a single-family residence with the unit below.
So do we have plans to reflect that?
Yes, I've submitted plans to reflect that.
Mr. Bazani, how are the plans?
Yes, the plans are adequate. The difference is that there will be a kit...you'll have two kitchens.
That's correct.
You have your regular kitchen, and then there's the kitchen and the opere unit down in the basement.
Yeah, the reason, just so that the...my nanny-in-laws could prepare their meals for the baby, because my wife and I both work upstairs, we're both in sales, and we just don't want them to have to come upstairs all the time to cook the meals. When the baby sees us, she starts crying.
Hold on, hold on. How large is that unit in the basement, or that space in the basement?
I would suggest that it is in excess of 600 square feet.
And the utilities are not separate, right? They're still...
No, because, well, the utilities are in the basement, but it's now being considered a single-family unit, so it's not...
Is there a connecting staircase?
There is a connecting staircase.
So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant a request.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 249-324-340 West Second Street.
Mr. Bazani, can the note please say that it's an opere unit for the record? And the plans indicate that?
Yeah, sure.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maransky. I'm an attorney with the business address of 340...that's not my business address, 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, I did get the board's message yesterday afternoon about the necessity to bring the plans for this Board Final Arbiter today. My client has the plans. He's not here yet. I don't know if he's delayed by weather. I do have the next Board Final Arbiter case, 100A Street, so perhaps if we take them out of order, my client will be here with the plans.
Okay, we can do that. So we'll call the next case in for the record, BOA 543-908-100A Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maransky. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this matter, a approval of a change in the parking garage conditions of 100A Street, may look familiar. It was actually heard by the board as a final arbiter member on December 19th of 2017. At the time, there was some confusion about the number of spaces. Subsequent to the approval of 10 spaces at that December 19th hearing, I was brought to my office's attention that the plans that were relied on were incorrect. The plan that I've submitted to the board is the correct plan, which shows, in fact, a 12...a garage accommodating 12 parking spaces, accommodated in three lift systems.
And what do the former plans...was that nine?
It was 10.
It was 10?
It was approved in April of 2016 with nine spaces and no lifts. It was cited for design of off-street parking facilities for maneuverability. In December, we had revised plans showing lifts, but it was approved for 10 when, in fact, there are 12.
So this is to perfect the record?
This is to perfect the record, and these are the accurate plans showing the 12...the parking space, 12 vehicles.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Counselor, could you...
Yes, it's a little bit confusing because of the illustration. Each of the double slots actually holds five cars and not six, so one of those slots always has to remain open so that the cars can rotate. The illustrations at the top show each bay with the vehicle in it for six, but that is, in fact, not the case. There's always one vacancy there.
So these plans aren't quite right either.
Well, they are in the sense that they show the system, they say 12 parking spaces, but instead of showing six vehicles in the six-slot lift system, only five vehicles fit in a six-slot lift system.
Okay, so the two doubles...
Five cars each.
Ten.
Correct.
And the one single...
That's a...that's a three bays with two, exactly.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Was the original approval with design review, or was it a straight approval?
Design review, I believe it's been done, and this is...
This is probably it, Chair.
Right.
Okay. So, motion carries. You're all set.
And thank you. And I believe on 340, we'll just have to call it whenever the board deems fit. Thank you.
So now we're going to go to the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30?
For West Moreland.
Okay, for the record...for the record, calling BOA 786-629-40 West Moreland Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maransky. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, this member is...this matter is not ready. It is having a second meeting at the Civic Association on February 1. It is also incorrectly listed as being a case with an applicant of Codman Square Neighborhood Development Corporation. In fact, it's not.
Who is the applicant?
The applicant is Thomas Noto.
Noto, okay. Okay, so you're requesting a deferral?
Yes, please.
Make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
February 27th.
Thank you.
Counselor, just a reminder, after your next deferral, there aren't any more.
Understood.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
My name is James English.
Address first, Jim.
Home or office?
No, the...
The project.
Project.
Is it...
82 Kemble Street.
So for the record, calling BOA 712-439-82 Kemble Street. Name and address for the record.
James English, I am Senior Vice President of Suffolk Construction Company, 65 Ellerton Street in Rochry.
And what are you requesting, Mr. English?
We're requesting a deferral to allow us to continue the community process that's currently being run by the Office of Neighborhood Services. Joshua McFadden is the point person on that.
Thank you. And may I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Date, please.
Do you know when you're meeting with the community, Josh?
Sometimes.
Sometimes. So we'll go with a March 6th date. March 6th.
So motion carries with that date. You're all set.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Hearing number, call the first case. Calling the first case, BOA 759-639-1650 Soldiers Field Road. This is a wreck, a new one-story building to include an indoor and outdoor sale of new and used...unused motor vehicles, automotive parts, accessories, and supplies. Violation is Article 29, Section 4, to the GPOT applicability. Article 51, Section 16, indoor sale of new or used motor vehicles is a conditional use. Article 51, Section 16, sale of motor vehicle parts, accessories, and supplies is a conditional use. Article 51, Section 16, the repair of motor vehicles is a forbidden use. Article 51, Section 16, the parking lot for vehicles awaiting sale is conditional. And Article 51, Section 16, the outdoor sale of new and used motor vehicles is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board. Stephen Miller, McDermott Quiltean Miller, 28 State Street. I have with me this morning Nick Cazulo from my office, and also Steve Smith, who's the senior project manager on this first CBRE. We're seeking your approval this morning to convert the site. This was the old Martinetti Liquor site on 1650 Soldiers Field Road to a new car dealership, which would feature Maserati and Alfa Romeo cars. We have gone through the BRA small project review. We've done significant outreach to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We've had an abudders meeting, and we've met with the elected officials on this site. The building would be approximately 27,000 square feet on a site of 80,279 square feet. As part of the process, the FCA, Fiat Chrysler Corporation, has agreed to community benefits of not only significant full-time jobs, but also a donation to the Parks Department and also a car to the Boston Center for Youth and...
Miller, we're not interested in that. We are just really focused on the application before us. This is in a green belt protection overlay district, so please tell us about that.
So we are in the process with the BRA and...
Is it the Parks Department that's involved in the GPOT?
The Parks Department is, but the BRA has taken the lead with the landscape architect from the BRA, Jill Ox, and we've been in discussions with the BRA on this whole site and design review.
Excellent.
And we have not finished the design review at this point. The FCA understands that it's a green belt district and requires design review. There has been some comments from the Parks Department, and we have not totally resolved the final design yet.
Okay, so Parks has already gotten...has had a chance to review it.
Parks has received all copies of everything.
Excellent.
And we're not, as I said, we're not finished with design review yet, assuming that your zoning approval would require a design review besides.
Sure. And is there...I don't remember. Is there access from Leo Birmingham?
No.
So it's completely from Soldiers Field?
Yes, and right now, it's basically the whole front is open.
Yep, yes.
And the final plan, however, however, comes out, we're cutting down to two...one entrance, one exit.
Excellent.
Two curb cuts on the site.
Yeah, that could definitely use the work.
And there would be some green space, totally new building, obviously. As I said, we've done the outreach with the community and elected officials, and it's certainly a significant upgrade. It's a far less intense use than a liquor store, particularly in November, December, and around the beginning of the summer. It'd be much, much less intense.
And are there...is there a proposal for street trees to go in?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Street trees?
There...we're in discussion now as to what...there's definitely going to be trees on the site, and we're in discussions once again with the BRA and the landscape as to how the buffering on the street occurs. That's still a question we're trying to resolve.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Miller, the use is also less intense leading up to Super Sunday.
Unfortunately, they're not...they've been out of...they've closed a while ago.
Yeah. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Warren O'Reilly, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Counselor Mark Ciammo, would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor Perez, representing the Carpenter's Union, would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Continue with the DHD and designer review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the next cases in to the record. Calling BOA 774-472-63 Colonial Avenue, BOA 774-470-68 Colonial Avenue, BOA 774-468-70 Colonial Avenue, BOA 767-333-28 Mallett Avenue, BOA 767-337-32 Mallett Avenue, BOA 767-336-30 Mallett Avenue, BOA 767-339-34 Mallett Avenue, BOA 774-473-36 Mallett Avenue, BOA 774-467-30 New England Avenue, BOA 774-462-42 New England Avenue, BOA 774-460-60 New England Avenue, BOA 774-458-70 New England Avenue, BOA 774-455-80 New England Avenue, BOA 774-454-90 New England Avenue, BOA 774-447-129 Southern Avenue, and BOA 774-452-131 Southern Avenue. These parcels are from parcels A to Q, which are 16 parcels, and they are to erect a new single-family residential semi-attached dwelling with one R-street parking from A to Q. They range from 2,700...2,000 square feet to 3,700 square feet. I'm going to read into the...instead of doing all the violations, they're all violations of the same. I'm going to call into the record one violation, so I don't do them all. So this is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area of accessory uses. Article 65, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, floor air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Secretary, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Mackenzie and Associates, 183 State Street, Suite 6, Boston 02109. I have with me the Executive Director of Codman Square NDC, Gail Lattimore, and to her right, the Director of Real Estate, Beth O'Donnell, are here as well. At the outset, Madam Chair, our architect, Michael Washington, called me, and he was so far away, caught up in traffic, I directed him that we would try to stand in his stead. I know the plans are submitted, and any questions relative to the design of the building can be answered by either Ms. Lattimore or Ms. O'Donnell. Let me just begin. I'm going to...I am going to take a particular role, but I'm going to let a lot be stated by...so that we don't take much of your time, by both Ms. Lattimore and if you have any questions about the design with Ms. O'Donnell. What I will say is that the Codman Square history, we've been before this board on many projects, they've been intimately involved in the Dorchester community in providing all types of housing, both in terms of rental and as far as homeownership. This project does consist of 16 home ownership units, and they are very large units, I think, ranging from about 1,400 square feet plus to the largest units being somewhere around 1,600. They have the support. They have met with the Talbot Norfolk Triangle Neighbors United, and they have a letter of support, and I'm going to submit that to you. We have a letter of support from Counselor Nisa Asabi George. We have a letter of support from Representative Russell Holmes. Some of them go back to an earlier time, and I'll state that just for the record, some of those are when the project was first presented in terms of 2015. Some they have gotten the updates on, but I at least want to put in record what previously was stated at that time by Representative Russell Holmes, Congressman Capuano, and also City Councilor Michelle Wu. So I'd like to submit those for the record, Madam Chair, if I may. And then with the specifics, I would like to have Ms. Lattimore, the Executive Director, talk to you about the project, talk to you about Codman Square NDC, and then she can either respond to the questions about the specifics or give that to Ms. O'Donnell.
Mr. Feaster, as far as these violations are concerned, can somebody speak to that? Because one of them is the limitation of area of accessory use. Is that because of garages or parking? What is that related to?
I believe that's because of parking on the site. Each...if the request of the neighbors, each unit has its own off-street parking.
So there's one parking space per unit?
There's one curb cut per unit, and the idea is that the homeowner would be able to park two cars in tandem on each driveway.
I see. And are these one...two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
There are three...every one of them is three bedrooms.
Okay. And FAR is excessive? What's required, I guess, it's .8? And what are you proposing for FAR?
I'm sorry, I don't have the information, the FAR information.
I can...I believe I...I believe I do have that.
The allowable is .4, and in general, the .83.
.83, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bazani.
Okay, and how are the drawings, Mr. Bazani?
The...it's a very nice project. Michael...
Michael does an excellent job.
Well, I'll make sure I...I will get this tape so he can have that for his mother.
[laughing]
Absolutely.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, we need Celestin here for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We support this project and welcome the homeownership aspect of it. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ryan Lindergan from the Department of Neighborhood Development, going on the record in support of this project. Two of the parcels are located on Department of Neighborhood Development land. It's gone through an extensive community process. They've come into the D and D funding round, have been awarded funding from Department of Neighborhood Development, and these units are comparable to the Neighborhood Homes Initiative. They're very well-designed units, and they've done a really great job thus far communicating that with the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might add, if it would be appropriate, I also wanted the board to know these units are 100% affordable.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jessica Rodriguez from City Council at Large Nisa Asabi George's office, and the council would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jawan Skeens, representing District 4 City Council President, Andrea Campbell's office, we would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Perez, representing the Carpenter's Union, would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Question?
Yeah, I'm just curious what the occupancy is looking at demand and what the process of...is there a lottery? What will be the process of selecting the homeowner?
We'll be working with the city of Boston in order to both qualify and select future homeowners.
So there...
Will be...
There will be people who live in a certain income?
Yes.
Any other questions? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BRA.
With design review?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Case, calling BOA 783-625-200 to 208 Adam Street. This is a proposed change of option from a convenience store to a barbershop. The violation is Article 65, Section 15. Barbershop is a conditional use in the district. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Benavides Mejia, 20208 Adam Street, Dorchester.
So you're proposing to change the occupancy from a convenience store to a barbershop?
Yes.
Is that the only use in the space?
Yes, it's open space, yes.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
I did a plan with you on Thursday, and the drawings are accurate.
And is that the only use in the building, or is there residential above? And is that the only use in the building, or is there residential above? No, it's business, shopping.
Yeah. It's a shopping center.
Mr. Bezani?
The same neighborhood, we're shopping.
Mr. Bezani?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, is it just purely commercial, or is there residential?
It's special on the ground floor. There's insufficient information to ascertain what is above, but from the look of the photograph, I would suggest that it is residential.
Okay. So anybody, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Qua Fan from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record in support. They both received fully support from the local civic group and Fuse on the Main Street. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeckren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Could we be in design review of the signage?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, and that provides a.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 653-417-258 to 262 WASHINGTON STREET. This is a change of occupancy from a branch stationed garage to offices, community center, and accessory cultural spaces and seating area. The violation is Article 65, Section 15. Community center is conditional use. Article 65, Section 15, offices is a conditional use. Name an address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Peter Cairo, 303 Congress Street, Boston. Council here on behalf of petitioner Third Sector New England, which owns the property. And with me are Faisal Abid, Facilities Manager for Third Sector, and Jana Senzian, who is with Urban Guild, which has been working with Third Sector to sort of convert the property for community use, as the application indicates. Briefly, Third Sector is a public charity, which acquired the property about three years ago.
Yeah, just tell us about this proposal.
Sure. The property was traditionally, historically, used for a variety of automobile-related uses, garage, auto repair, dispatching. About three years ago, Third Sector acquired the property, and it's been working with Jana's organization to transform it into community-based uses, basically offices, a community center, and some accessory cultural uses. And it's really Jana and her community-based organization that have been occupying it and preparing it and converting it for that use over the last three years. Most of the physical work has been done. We've been operating under a temporary, series of temporary certificates of occupancy with Commissioner Christopher's cooperation and involvement. And this is really just to legalize the permitted zoning, because office, community center, and the accessory uses are conditional uses in this district.
So what is the zoning district?
This is the, well, it's the local convenience sub-district within the neighborhood, within the neighborhood district and within the Dorchester's district.
And what's the name of the organization?
The owner is Third Sector, New England.
I understand, but who's the operator?
The operator is Urban Guild.
And tell us, what population are you reaching out to?
So we work predominantly with residents from the neighborhood right around where we are, Boden Geneva Grove Hall, but people come from all across the greater Boston area. Mostly people of color, but a lot of allies and a big mix. We work with local businesses, as well as a lot of healers and organizations that are interested in community development and environmental, urban agriculture, things like that.
How are the plans, Mr. Bezani?
The plans don't show very much, actually. It's a very large building. There are one, two, three, very large, open blocks with nothing indicated. There's a series of offices along the front, so exactly what's it being used for?
Jana, if you could sort of point out the actual occupancies?
Sure. So this is the building, and when we went into it, it was all filled with vehicles, and this front of the building was standing water and really dilapidated.
What are the uses?
Tell us what's being proposed.
Yes. So we are here, this is the entry point to the building. This is, there's an office area here. This is all open space. There's a conference table, gathering. The building, we have a temporary permit where we've been having community gatherings, meetings, and different kinds of cultural uses.
Tell us about the rest of the building?
So this is open space. There is a wall here dividing the two spaces. There are chairs, lounge areas, yoga happens, mats. It's a large, open space, so we use it very flexibly. Councilor Campbell's office, for example, will have senior meetings there. Music was there for seniors, about 200 of them came from the district and beyond. So we use it flexibly for those kinds of uses. Artists are there and residents just sharing what they do, little exhibitions. It's been a flexible use for community so far.
Okay, and it's.
Is there any food served that's anticipated?
There's no food.
No.
The building is large.
Yeah.
Do you have a kitchen out? Do you have cafeteria? Do you have?
No, actually, what we have is an air, a simple area. There's a sink and a refrigerator, so when people bring things in, they're able to store them. But there's no food preparation at all.
But if you have 200 people?
They cater. We get an event license, and they'll cater, they'll bring that in.
And so there's a proposal for the outdoor rehab of the space?
Yes. One of the things that the folks at ISD wanted to see was an upgrade to the facade, better entry points. They also wanted to have additional restroom fixtures put in to the space, but we, that's how we've been working with them so far, to identify what would be needed.
What is the actual use of the space, maybe?
So it will be for community meetings. It's for, we have healers come in, yoga teacher training, things like that. Cultural uses, discussions, exhibitions. Artists from the community will hang things on the wall.
And you have your offices there as well?
Our office is there as well.
So it's multifunctional to meet the needs of all generations, essentially?
It's very intergenerational, yeah.
Okay. And you're going to be doing some work to the front, so that it appears more welcoming?
Yes, yes, right now, there's no lighting or signage.
Or how about punching in windows and things like that?
That hasn't been discussed yet, so we are going to be speaking to architects to see what might be needed. There are windows at the front of the building. Right now, it only comes into the office area. And there are also, I believe, eight skylights throughout the larger space. So there is natural light in the building, not a lot, but it's there.
Are the garage doors staying?
Yes, there were two roll-up bay doors at either end of the building. We keep that there, because when people are moving things in and out, that's been very useful for us. But I know that one of the things that was desired was a nicer kind of main entry into the space.
Is it a fully sprinkled building as well?
It is, yes.
Mr. Bezani, does that help you with your question?
Yeah, I mean, in essence, I think it's an exhibition building of one sort or another. The space is very large, and my only concern would be that with populations of up to 200 people, there are not sufficient bathrooms.
Well, it's for the, we've been working with, and Jana's been working with ISD quite closely on making sure that their bathrooms are added. Part of that will be the code compliance that's required after this.
So we can do this, no code relief. Are there any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Flavio Tavega, we'd like to go on record in support. The project does have support from the Main Streets and the Four Corners Action Coalition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jawan Skeens representing Councilor Andrea Campbell for District 4 President. We would like to go on record of support. For the past two years, I have attended community meetings inside of this space. We also have had a few district events in this space. It's quite big, and I appreciate the work that they do. So we would like to go on record of support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve without zoning, till we, without, no building code relief, yeah.
And can we have design review for exterior, for the exterior work? And screening and buffering, perhaps, of the lots, so there's some privacy to the participants in the programs? Marie?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, with those providers.
Can I just say that I'm so glad that something's getting done? With that building, I've seen some of the spaces that have been recreated as a form of representative of that neighborhood. And people need place, places to be, to feel safe and to be able to express and to gather. So I really appreciate that that's happening.
If those garage doors go, it'll make it feel much more welcoming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Case calling BOA 720-018, 182 NORFOLK AV. This is to demolish an existing one-story garage and erect a three-story, three-family dwelling with roof decks. Violation is Article 50, Section 29. The lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot area for each additional dwelling is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot width is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot frontage is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, excuse me, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, my client here is Emmanuel Manny Canuto, who lives at 184 Norfolk Ave. He and his family have lived in this neighborhood for nearly half a century. This is a case of classic infill construction. Norfolk Ave intersects with Shetland Street, which is in a 3F 4,000 district in the, under, in the Roxbury neighborhood district. 184, which is my client's three-decker, is a lot of 1,653 square feet. 182, the matter before the board here today, is a lot of 653 square feet. This is one in a series of nearly identically sized lots with nearly identical three-family, three-story buildings. This is an undeveloped lot. There's also another undeveloped lot next to it, 180 Norfolk. In terms of the zoning violations, the minimum lot size in this 3F 4,000 for a three-family dwelling is actually 6,000 square feet. As I mentioned, this lot is 1,653, which is consistent with the ASBIL conditions on this block on Norfolk Avenue. This refusal letter cites a lot width and lot frontage insufficiency, which, it's my position, is incorrect. The minimum lot width and minimum lot frontage in this zone is 25 feet. This is a 29-foot wide lot. There is a parking insufficiency cited, which is correct. There's no parking associated with this. The FAR is excessive under the code. We're at an FAR of .8, which is quite reasonable.
What's required?
It's a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The requirement is .8, Madam Chair, and I'll have to calculate this quickly. We're at 3,400, we're at about, a little over 2, about 2.2. The, there's also a violation for side yard insufficiency. There's only a required side yard in the district where the building is not attached to another. This is a standalone building now. There is a plan, and the plans show a building at 180, and this is from Mr. Bezani's edification. There will be another three-family proposed at 180 for a different owner, but it's by the same architect. So the plan that he showed for context shows the future three-family on the plans for this. So there will be a connection on that one side.
Mr. Morancey, though, Norfolk Street is highly trafficked, and it's also hard to do parking. So will both proposals, and I know Shetland came in with a fewer number of parking spaces than required. What's gonna be the cumulative impact, then, of all these projects with no parking?
Well, again, I think that, you know, we're talking about lots that, I assume, at one point, actually had dwelling buildings on them.
But environments have changed, you know? That might have worked, you know, I don't know, 30 years ago, but... So that's my question, is that, you know, maybe in the past, the density worked, no parking worked, but today, that might be a different story.
I understand the concern. I mean, there was a community process, there's significant support in the community. I actually have letters and petitions of over 60 residents in the neighborhood who do support the project. I would only make the point that evidently, they feel that the benefits of having these lots developed for new housing outweigh any potential parking impacts from the buildings not having off-street parking. It's in fairly close, or very close proximity to the commuter rail stop up on Massachusetts Avenue. And it's also within walking distance of some of the, of the medical center, and would be ideally suited for, as residences, for anybody who works in that area.
And so the parking that's now in this spot, who parks there?
That would be my clients who owns the house next door. There's currently a garage there.
That's 184.
That's 184, correct.
Was there any look at having a, perhaps, a two-family or something else where there could be, there would be lesser of an impact on the community?
I mean, it would be a two-family and potentially two-two families with curb cuts. So it would be a couple of units less, and it would be a couple fewer on-street parking spaces. Two or possibly three would be, well, there's already a curb cut there at 182, but a widened curb cut at 180, so there'd be probably another parking space loss on the street.
So at 184?
Couldn't they have done a shed, shed easement through and put the curb up between the two buildings?
Well, the width, 60 feet, I mean, for a standard driveway, if it were 12 feet, that would leave 42, which would be 20-foot, 21-foot wide buildings with no side yards on the, you know, if it went to the extreme lot edge on the left and the right. Kind of small in terms of building width.
But there's not, it's three feet now.
Well, yeah, the requirement, but again, with 58 feet with the 12-foot center, even a 10-foot center driveway, would be building widths somewhere between 21 and 24 feet, which I guess could be done.
Classic brokers.
Is the intention supposed to be for sale or rental?
I believe these would be, I don't know. My client is here. Would the, Manny? I'm sorry, would these be rentals or condominiums? Rentals, yes, rentals.
And how many units are at 184?
Three. It's a line of three-family dwellings.
I'm very familiar with this strength of Norfolk. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joshua McFadden, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Applicant that with the director butters and has garnered a large amount of support in the neighborhood, as well as the support of DS and I. Would like to go on record in support of this project at this time.
Good morning, Board. My name is Joe Holland. I'm the director butter from the side and the rear, and I'm in strong support of this project.
So you're the owner of 180?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you're gonna be coming in with a proposal very similar to this? Will you be providing parking?
I have the project on Shetland Street, ma'am, so I would be providing parking with that project that can provide an easement.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? Do you have a motion, please?
Motion to approve will be being...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record, I'm going to put my name in opposition. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go back to the two earlier cases this morning at 9:30. Call back into the record, BOA 266-860-20, Vale Street. Is Vale Street here? Record, please. Come on up here. This is for extension. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, everybody from the board. My name is Alexander Cioppi, 73 Arlington Street, Brighton, Mass.
And tell us why you're requesting an extension?
To be honest, I had a difficult time at the BRA. I had gone through my initial design review with Michael Canizo, which lasted about 14 months. Then I got an email that he was overwhelmed with caseloads, and he flipped it to Matthew Martin, and it was like going through the BRA again. It was another 12 to 14 months with him.
And you were responsive to the request?
Yeah, I've got emails and emails.
Okay. So when, so may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm assuming that with two years, you may be, you should be able to get this one.
I'm ready to go see Mr. Santana, like tomorrow.
Excellent. We have one more case?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
We need to take the one-year extension, we didn't do it.
Oh, was there a motion?
I motioned for a one-year extension.
Was there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next case is the board final arbiter, BOA 249-324, 340 West Second Street. Counselor? Going to move forward?
Yes.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair members, this matter is a 29-unit building at 340 West Second Street in South Boston. Some history, the reason we're here is for approval of plans that have changed somewhat. This matter was originally approved by the board on June 30th, 2014. The decision of the board was entered into the records on June 11th, 2014. On June 30th of 2014, budding condominium unit owners filed a judicial appeal, thus staying the 24-month period of the validity of the zoning relief. The litigation was ended by a judgment by agreement on December 19th, 2016. Thus, the zoning relief is valid for approximately another 305 days. So we're not here for an extension on time, and I just wanted to put that on the record.
So what are you here for?
There, as a part of the process and as a result of the settlement, yeah, of the settlement agreement, some changes had to be made in the design of the building, most notably, the setbacks on the right side of the building, which were in fact initially zoning compliant at five feet, were increased, and an indentation was added to the building, essentially to create separation distance, room for circulation of light and air between the two buildings. There were some other features of the settlement agreement that are unrelated to this hearing. As a result, my client now purchased this project in August of 2017. So I represented the owner, an applicant of the original hearing, and I represent the new owner. He commissioned a different architect or a new architect to essentially relocate some of the massing of the building. The building had a small courtyard in the rear of it, which was essentially filled in as the building was brought over on the right side. No change in height, no change in the number of units, there are 29. Small reduction in the square footage, the size of the ground floor commercial space, and that was to introduce bicycle storage, and we are seeking an increase in the, in the number of parking spaces. My client has elected to install a lift in virtually every parking space. Thus, the provision of off-street parking in the garage would be 70 vehicles. When this was originally approved, it was approved for 43 parking spaces. My client initially was going to increase the parking to 51. When he talked to the lift company, it's cost efficient to just simply make all of the spaces...
So, Mr. Moranci, was zoning, was parking a violation in the original?
It was, it was...
And so this meets the parking requirement?
It, there is, stackers incur the violation of design of off-street parking facilities because of the maneuverability. I think the code has still not quite come up to speed with parkers and automated parking lift systems, how they're going to deal with them. But the point is that there were originally, there was originally a lift system in the building in June of 2014, so we had a violation for maneuverability attributable to a lift system. Besides that, nothing else has changed. There were three roof decks when it was approved, there are three roof decks now. There is access by headhouse, but again, this is a four-story flat-roof building. There, it was, it was accessed by headhouse in 2014 when it was approved, even though it was not a building code requirement at that time. As the board knows, it is now a building code requirement for four-story flat-roof buildings.
What are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drop your advocate.
May I have a motion, please? May I have a motion, please? Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now 10:30. I'm going to call, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? No deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Calling the first case for 10:30. Calling BOA 786-539-283, Old Colony Avenue. Old Colony Avenue here?
Yes.
George, you're right in front of me, sorry. This is, sorry. Get myself squared away here. This is a building, new four-story mixed-use building consisting of three residential units and a restaurant café. The violation is Article 13, Section 4, dwelling in a non-residential district. Article 14, Section 14-1, minimum lot size requirement is insufficient. Article 14, Section 14-2, lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 14, Section 14-3, minimum lot width requirement is insufficient. Article 14, Section 4, the minimum lot frontage requirement is insufficient. Article 15, Section 1, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 17, Section 1, usable open space is insufficient. Article 18, Section 1, front yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 19, Section 1, side yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 20, Section 1, rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 23, Section 23-1, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. And Article 16, Section 1, the height is excessive, 35 feet is the maximum. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair members of the board, this is an application for a new four-story mixed-use building, ground floor, commercial use, three residential units above, at 283 Old Colony Avenue in South Boston. The zoning district here is L1, and it remains L1. This is not a zoning district that has been updated to Article 68 because it is in the Dorchester Avenue growth zone. So in terms of the violations cited, they all are applicable under the old zoning. I do need to talk about the growth zone plan, however, which has been approved by the Boston Planning and Development Agency, but not yet codified into zoning. Because what you find is that when you begin proposing new construction in the growth zone, it is in fact, the guidelines under the plan approved by the BRA or the BPDA that you're held to in the community process and during any conferences with the BPDA. That being said, this is in Use Zone 3 under the plan. Use Zone 3 provides for preference of ground floor commercial use with residential above. It is in Zone 1 in terms of lot coverage, which is a 100% lot coverage zone. There would be a setback on this proposed new building. On the right side, there would be a three-foot alley leading to a back area, which is also setback about five feet for half the building at the rear of the lot line. The butter to the right is 275 Old Colony, which is a new condominium project, also owned by my client Stuart Malali. This is a district with a 45-foot podium height, but it's a 60-foot bonus density height district, which my client is not availing himself of. The maximum height of this building would be 41 feet. The lot itself is 1,580 square feet, it has 42 feet of frontage. The resulting FAR here would be three. Under the plan, there are no maximum FAR numbers. In terms of parking, there is none. This is located in, within walking distance of Andra Square. Under the plan, off-street parking requirements range from zero to a maximum of one. The, in terms of the units, there are three one-bedroom floor units, floor-through units, I'm sorry, and the commercial space on the ground floor is approximately 500 or so square feet.
And so the one-bedrooms are how many square feet?
They look to be about 1,100 square feet. The plans set that I have doesn't indicate, but doing a quick measurement, they look to be about 1,000 square feet perhaps, and there is no roof deck.
What are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drop your advocate.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Moranci, what, I'm trying to figure out which lot is, what's on this, on the lot now?
This is, it's a one-story commercial building. I'm not sure of the nature of the building is... Do you know when the new condominium building went up, Mr. Ehrlich, at 275?
Yeah, I think so. It's not, this is probably, the picture was taken right before that.
Exactly, yeah.
It's a pizza and relish, rotary laundry?
Yeah, it's a, is it a sub shop?
Okay, yeah. You got a later picture.
My client was here, I believe he had to leave though, so I'm not sure.
I know where it's now. Thank you.
Okay. So what are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drop your advocate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis in Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to on-record in support of this project. I think the proponent has noted he does have the support of the Andra Square Civic Association, and it is basically compliant with the BRA's plan. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Laura Miller, City Councilor, Ed Flynn's office, we too wish to go on record in support. Mr. Malali did a tremendous amount of work with the neighborhood. The Neighborhood Association is on board with it, and they're excited for this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of the council at large, Michael Flaherty, counsel at Go-Record.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Do you have a motion, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set with that provision?
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 757-965-712-EAST-SIXTHREE. Are you also counsel?
Have a busy day today.
This is an interior and exterior renovation of an existing three-unit building. Work will also include building, a three-story addition, and relocating three decks. The violations, Article 27S, Section 5, this is in the South Boston IPod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is an application to erect a rear, a rear addition extending a three-unit building at six, I'm sorry, 712 East Sixth Street in South Boston. There is no change in use, it is a three-family, it will remain a three-family, there's no use violation. It is a dimensionally compliant rear addition, complies with the requirements, the dimensional requirements of Article 68. In terms of what it means for the building, according to the assessing department, the present structure has seven bedrooms. The addition would convert the three units each into a three-bedroom unit. So there would be a net increase of two bedrooms, going from a building containing seven bedrooms in total for three units to a building containing nine bedrooms. The work being done would involve a removal of a small portion of an unoriginal, a non-original rear addition, and then replacing it with a new addition that would extend to the rear to a depth of approximately 40 feet from the rear lot line. There would be a rear porch structure, also providing secondary egress, that would be another nine feet in depth, leaving a rear yard setback of 31 feet. In terms of the height, that will not change. The present structure is 34 feet 3 inches. The addition itself is, would constitute approximately 21 feet by 24 feet in terms of what is already at the rear of the building. The total area of that is approximately 635 square feet of a new rear addition. The entirety of the addition is actually 32 feet by 20 feet, but as I said, a portion of an existing rear addition is being demolished for the, for the new work. As I said...
Mr. Moranci, can you explain what's happening in the basement?
The basement is simply being, is being excavated, and, let me get my plan sheets. The, so the, the existing rear addition is being demoed, and then the basement floor plan would simply be crawl space with a polycover for moisture insulation.
Is that, is that front room occupied? What is going on in there?
No, that's, that's...
By the bay?
No, it's simply, oh, I see, on the, on the existing building? No, that's simply storage space and mechanical utility space.
What are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drop your advocate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Can I ask, what is it abut in the rear with the extension? What is the impact?
The, it, it abuts the rear yard of another, of another lot.
Is it residential, is it a...
Yes, it's a, yeah, it's a residential zone. It's, as I said, it's, the separation distance from the edge of the porch is approximately 31 feet, that's green space, that's rear yard, to the lot line of the rear yard of, or the yard of another building.
And just a reminder, please give us new information. I know this has been through a community process, so if you are up to speak and somebody has already stated your concern, give us some new information. Otherwise, just put your name and address on the record, okay? Your name and address, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Ed Flynn, City Council. I speak against the proposal. Doesn't fit in with the, with the neighborhood. I got a lot of calls from neighbors, people in the community, and they're against it. And as the city council for District 2, I'm also speaking out against the proposal. Thank you.
Welcome, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis in Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to on-record in strong opposition. We've held two abutters meetings on this proposal. All the abutters are vehemently opposed due to the expansion in size, the loss of open space, and the inconsistency with the other houses on that block, among other issues. So we are in opposition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of the council at large, Michael Flaherty, counsel stands with the neighbors on this proposal in opposition.
Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, my name is Maureen. I'm from Representative Nick Collins's office. He would also like to oppose this project after hearing from members of the community.
Michael Sheehan, resident of 7046th Street since 1978. I'm highly opposed to this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Charles McCullough. I reside at One Onslow Terrace in a butter to this project. First, I'd like to say thank you very much for taking the time to hear the vehement amount of opposition to this project. As you know, this is a good example of why the IPod was put in place for South Boston. It allows for oversight of an egregious project, which will have a disproportionate and detrimental effect, not only on the neighborhood at large, but on specific abutters as well. As you know, City Point has unique and different zoning needs than the rest of South Boston, and this proposal is clearly at odds, not only with common sense, but is also completely opposed to the quality of life in South Boston. I have a handout if you don't mind.
Can you please summarize what your opposition is based on?
As you can see in the handout, there has been widespread opposition, over 400 neighbors...
Can you be specific to the zoning requirements and the violations, please?
Sure. I will group them in three areas, quality of life, the project has an exceedingly high floor-to-air... The project has an exceedingly high Florida area ratio, which will impact shadows cast on neighbors, decrease air circulation between buildings, limit privacy, and remove what little precious green space exists in City Point. It will alter the character of the neighborhood. There are iconic and historic buildings that South Boston is known for, six of which triple-deckers are on this block alone. And this, an approval of this project would set a dangerous precedent for the destruction of that architectural heritage. And then lastly, there are two specific safety concerns. The first being the close proximity of this addition to the neighbors on Onslow Terrace. As you can see in that diagram, the shaded area is blocked to vehicular access. Fire equipment cannot get back to those buildings, and any equipment would have to be hand-carried. The proximity of this addition to those buildings increases the risk of fire transmission between the buildings, and it also blocks access to the second closest fire hydrant, which is at the southwest corner of N and Sixth Street. Lastly, I also believe that there is a significant safety hazard based on the underground sewage pipe that goes underneath this property. The abutters at 706 and 710 East Sixth Street have restrictions placed on the deed of their property prohibiting any construction on that land because of the underground sewage, which was placed in, over sixty-five years ago. Thank you very much for your time and for hearing us out.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you should have in your possession four hundred and nine signatures of neighbors and abutters that are opposed to this project.
So do you, as far as the zoning violations are concerned, do you have new information to add?
No, I do not.
Okay. And you put your name and address on the record?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Given that information, may I have a-
To, I have a moment, too?
Oh, please, yes, of course.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So with respect to some of the comments, density, the maximum FAR in Article 68 is two. The resulting FAR here is 1.8. We're talking about a six hundred and thirty-five-square-foot zoning-compliant rear addition that would serve the purpose, or the effect of adding two bedrooms to a currently seven-bedroom, three-unit building. The addition is compliant with respect to side setbacks. The rear yard setback required under Article 68 is twenty feet. We are at thirty-one feet. It's height compliant, it's density compliant, it is compliant with respect to all setbacks. It leaves approximately seven hundred square feet of true green space, as well as the open space on the rear porches. Rear porches already exist, they're simply being moved back-
Because the only violation was the IPod.
Which-
There was no-
Citation, the only citation.
No citation, right.
The only citation is for IPod. And I understand that people don't like it, but my client is playing by the rules. For years, we heard that, that we want people to play by the rules and follow zoning. Unless there are plans to reduce the maximum FAR in this district to below 1.8, or to increase rear yard setbacks to over thirty feet, I just think that any decision by this board to deny this based on the IPod would be, would be inconsistent, not only with where Article 68 is now, but what, where I believe Article 68 is going. I envision no changes to Article 68 that would, in the future, relegate this to being an unapprovable rear addition. And if that were the case, that would be kind of frightening for property owners.
What about, what about the questions around the density and the character, changing the character of the housing?
Well, it's, it's a rear addition. I mean, it's certainly changed the character in the sense that it's a six hundred and thirty-five-square-foot rear addition, but in terms of the density and the character, it's zoning compliant. It, the, the, FAR is the, is the mechanism by which the code measures density, and the code, which was here, enacted in November of sixteen, I believe, said a maximum density with an FAR of 2.0. We're at 1.8, so we're not even maxing out the allowed density under the code.
What about the issue that was raised about the sewage pipe?
I don't, there's nothing. I've examined this deed, Mr. Ehrlich. There is no deed restriction on this. There's an area in the back that I did hear at, at meetings, that there was some kind of a sewer easement. There is no easement across this property. I've examined the deed, and if there were, and I, and I know where people believe that the easement lies, and it may be in deeds of other properties, this addition comes nowhere near that.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion denied.
Denied without prejudice?
Denied without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I'm opposed. I mean, the issue here is more faulty of how the zoning is written. This is, that is zoning compliant, and overlay district to put over that, I understand why it's there, but, you know, most of the checklists are still compliant.
Motion carries. Okay?
Calling a next case, calling BOA 766-148-333, West Third Street. This is to raise an existing structure erecting new two-family dwelling with three off-street parking on the first-floor garage. Violation, Article 27S, Section 5, in the South Boston IPod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney of Adams &amp; Moranci, with the business address of 350 West Broadway.
So tell us what's being proposed.
Madam Chair, we have proposed a 333 West Third is a demolition of an existing two-family building with no parking, and erecting a new two-family building with three parking spaces as required by Article 68.
And the only violation again is IPod applicability.
That's right. So the only, it is dimensionally compliant, it is significantly below the full-area ratio of both units, just to take us through the building and program. Unit one is eighteen hundred fifty-nine square feet, unit two is eighteen hundred twenty-three square feet. The one issue that I heard overwhelmingly in the neighborhood was to remove the roof deck and then also roof access. So that was removed, it's absent from these sets of plans and has been removed. The-
Tell us about the parking.
There's three parking spaces, 1.5 parking spaces per unit is required, and this building complies with the parking ratio. The open space is more than double of what's required, and the FAR is about thirty percent less.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Plans are adequate.
Now, is this an office or a bedroom that I'm seeing here? I'm looking at the proposed third-floor plan.
It's an office. There's no closet.
For now.
What does closet have to do with that?
It would have to be seventy square foot, have an open window, and a closet to be a bedroom.
So it looks like it has a window.
But you can't use an, a what?
In building code, you need a closet, I believe.
So these are how many bedrooms?
Two, two bedrooms, two bedrooms each, but it is subject to design review at the BRA.
Okay.
So that is also a condition in addition to the zoning relief.
Any other questions from the board?
What's the BRA's position on this, Jeff?
Approval with design review.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to own record in opposition. We did hold an abutters meeting, and there were concerns at that time about a roof deck possibly going on later. We do also have a letter of opposition from the St. Vincent's Neighborhood Association. We have heard concerns about the altering of the roof profile to be inconsistent with the house immediately next door, as well as the porch in the building, among other things. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Councilor Ed Flynn's office, we too wish to go on record in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan on behalf of the Council at large, Michael Flaherty on behalf of the Go-Record in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez from City Council at large, Denise Savi George's office, and the Council would also like to go on record in opposition.
Hi, my name is Mary Karen. I live at 331 West Third Street, next door to this project. As abutters, we're, I opposed to this at this time. We feel it wasn't what is presented. First, there was no copies made available to us at the abutters meeting. One copy was brought by the developers, and somebody had given an email address that they would forward copies to us. We never did receive them. We had said no front porches or decks facing West Third Street, no bubble hatches or roof decks for future roof decks. They said they took off the roof deck, but there is still a hatch, and as you know, that leads to a roof deck in the future. And also the height of the project, they said it was going to be the same height as the roof next door, which has a pitched roof, but I just want to make sure that it is that, that it's in compliance with the area. And also, if these can be done before final, you know, last week, it was, the street was dug up to turn off the utilities, and we weren't aware of that, and we all got up and the street was, the trucks were digging up the street to put off the utility. So that, I'm in opposition to that. I do have some signatures to enter copy from the St. Vincent's if they're opposed also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is James Curran. My residence is 331 West Third Street, and I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. So you're both at the same address?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Given that information, you have a question?
Someone's confused about the roof decks. There are, or there aren't?
Yeah, if I could direct your attention to drawing A 1.3, there's no roof deck.
But there is a hatch?
There's no hatch on the drawing.
Okay.
There, there was an earlier set of drawing that was, drawings that were emailed around, and I, but we did email the mayor's liaison the most recent set.
There, in the drawings that are submitted for approval, there's no hatch.
That's correct.
Okay. Nope, if we're all set.
Yep, and, and if the board feels comfortable with a proviso, eliminating roof decks, that would be acceptable to us. There is, on the third floor, there's a deck in the front of the building, not on the roof. But if, if, if that's what the issue is, we'll be happy to eliminate that here and now. It's not a problem.
I'm fine with that for eyes on the street, because I think that's an important piece of any construction. May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved with the PDA design review and, and with a proviso that there is no, no decks and no hatch. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 759045-167 Newbury Street. This is to change existing use from retail one-resident salon on ground floor to retail one-resident restaurant on ground floor. No work to be done, shell space only. If the tenant fit-out can be done under a separate permit.
No decks.
The building is to be occupied for one restaurant, one retail space, and one resident. Violation, Article 8, Section 3. Restaurant is conditional in a B365 sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Joyce, Darty Lot Office 50 Franklin Street, Boston, 02110 for the petitioner.
Constitutional building code, correct? It's taken care of.
No building code as part of this application.
Thank you.
Please tell us what's being proposed.
My name is Chris Talanian, Talanian Realty. I'm a thirty-two-year resident of the Back Bay. My family's been in business on Newbury Street since 1932. As we all know, commercial vacancy rates on Newbury Street are near record-high levels. We also all know restaurants help drive foot traffic to neighboring businesses, and the presence of restaurants can turn a retail streetscape into a destination location. Newbury Street is currently under ten percent food use, while neighboring Boylston Street is closer to twenty percent.
Chris?
Yes.
Can you just please speak to us? Don't read from your notes. Tell us what your proposal is all about. Do you have a tenant in mind? Did you have a community process? So just speak to us about the project.
I had prepared a brief statement, just to give a little bit of background.
We, we understand.
I really wasn't going to be more than, than a few minutes.
No, please tell us about the proposal specifically, okay?
I'm proposing a no-work change of use to the bottom-floor retail space at 167 Newbury Street.
Okay, and you have a tenant in mind?
No.
So this is just open, just, just, you want the use in hand so that you can-
I, I had prepared to speak about this.
Okay.
The purpose of this was to remove a significant portion of time from a prospective tenant's barrier to entry, so to speak.
Okay.
This was on behalf of a prospective tenant, and I had hoped that it would set a precedent for the neighborhood on a go-forward basis, and also to highlight the, the fractured nature of the zoning process as it stands now.
And so how many seats are being proposed in this, in this space?
I don't have a user lined up.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Generic.
Any questions from the board?
If I may just throw one thing, the seats, they'll be set by building code. It's a, it's a, it's a thousand square feet on the ground floor, the seating, the sprinklers, the egresses that'll be taken care of at the building, at the building code side of things going post to ISD.
Well, I, I think that, you know, to use the argument the other way, is to say that you are informed about what the requirements are, so it would prevent you from doing the math and figuring out how many seats there would be, how many bathrooms there would be, what the prep space would be, et cetera. So you could, you could in fact provide us with more, more significant information.
It's unfair to ask me to make those kinds of assumptions, in all due respect. I'm not a restaurateur. I'm a landlord, and I'm simply trying to get a tenant, and trying to help my prospective tenant pool any way I can, while at the same time saving those prospective tenants both time and money.
But you're also aware that we don't grant pocket zoning.
I'm sorry?
We do not grant pocket zoning. You have to have a specific use in mind.
The use is a restaurant.
It would be thirty-seven, and you know, the final operator could be subject to board final abut. That saves a smaller restaurant two to three months coming back here. Going to the community, going to the community groups is less time-consuming than getting back on the board's schedule. The idea was to give a smaller operator an idea that the use would be approved, provided it met certain conditions, and those conditions can be imposed later.
Okay, thanks. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? And please, just as I, first, we need representatives from elected officials, and please, if you're here to speak, give us new information. Do not repeat what somebody in front of you has already stated.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We have gone through an extensive process with 167 Newbury Street in this application. As it stands, the Civic Association is sharing strong opposition. We also held an abutters meeting where although very few abutters came, most of them, the two that did go on record or that signed in were from the alley, shared the alley on the common half side, also in strong opposition. Although I have received letters around twenty-five or so in support of this project from in and around the Back Bay area, I have received an overwhelming opposition from the residents that share this alley that are concerned with just the fact that they don't know what's coming, they're concerned with the amount of restaurants that they already have in the alley, so adding one more without the knowledge of what it's going to be is just not worth their support, and we would like to kind of echo that as it stands.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Is the opposition based on the proposed use, or the fact that it's sort of vague and open-ended?
Both. Some of the opposition is in fact that they would not like another restaurant on this end, on this side of Newbury Street, and also some have shared that their support, they would, they may be able to show support if at least they knew which restaurant they would give, like, sort of, what food would be sold there, it's maybe faster, they're not like the support on either end.
Can I speak to that?
Hold on. No, 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 we'll get back to you. I know this is your first time here, so hold on, okay?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Kate Bell on behalf of City Councilor Josh Zaken, we would also like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
Okay. So please, residents, give us new information, okay? You've heard what the mayor's office has had to say. Give us new information. Your name and address, folks.
Madam Chairman, my name is Joseph Gertner. I'm, I reside at the Vendome Building, 160 Commonwealth Avenue, apartment 605. I'm a director abut of 167 Newbury Street, which is across the narrow alley from us. We have, as trustees of the building, submitted a letter, so I won't repeat the content of the letter, just to say that we object to this proposal, and that our main objection is the vagueness, in fact, the lack of any precise description of the nature, the owner, the, any, any kind of activity that will take place at this restaurant, and we therefore think that it undermines a large element of the zoning process by basically giving a blank check to whoever takes over the lease. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Skordoff, and I represent the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. We are vigorously opposed to this- We are vigorously opposed to this applicant for all the reasons stated before, particularly that it undermines the whole purpose of conditional use zoning. I also want to say that the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, contrary to the applicant's remarks, always is able to meet and give their input before the date, and we are happy to speed up that process if the city chooses to speed up the process. So we feel that the neighborhood is in no way a hindrance to any applicant getting, getting approved or not approved beforehand. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vicki Smith. I'm a 40-year resident of the Back Bay. I'm also president of the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, and I've seen Newbury Street in good times and bad times. We realize their issues, the 375 parking, the triple net leases, and we'd love to work with Neighborhood Services, who we respect dramatically, and Josh and Jay Livingstone's offered to help us to work out some solutions for Newbury Street. It's our backyard, it's where we go for coffee or lunch or takeout. It's the closest to the entire residential Back Bay, so we have a real interest in, in Newbury Street being vibrant, and we'd hate to see it become one of these places that there's no input and end up like Harvard Square. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janet Hurwitz. I live directly behind this, this piece of property. I lived there for 35 years, and we, the people in my building oppose the application. His building of butts, our bedrooms, our parking spaces, the noise, we already have four restaurants on this alley that some have multiple pickups of garbage a day, they have outdoor storage of trash, they block the alley with deliveries, and so this alley is very active, and we're all bedrooms pretty much on the other side there. So what we would like is input on any new restaurant before they get a permit, so we can write into the agreement about hours of pickup, where trash is stored, and ways to make everybody's life easier. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the board. My name is Janice Rowan. I live at 186 Commonwealth Avenue, and I'm here on behalf of my condominium association, the 184-190 Commonwealth Condominium Association. We have 50 units. We're located directly across the alley from the former Exeter Street Theater Building, now the location of Joe's American Bar and Grill, and I can testify, having been a resident for more than 30 years and involved in the negotiations that go on between our association, NAB, and prospective restaurant operators, that it is very important to have specific plans, specific identity of the operator, and the description of the operation, so that the neighborhood can have appropriate input into the agreements that are created that then are very important to preserving protections about trash collection, storing it inside, modifying hours to make sure that they are, the noise and the, also, and the use of the alley is restricted in a way that respects the neighborhood's residential character on the other side of the alley. And in particular, too, we have concerns about deliveries, not just in terms of time and location, but also idling of engines. These things can be worked out. We have done that. We submitted our letter of comment to you all, dated January 24, and we would urge you to please review that letter and take into consideration the points made. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tim Mitchell. My home is on Commonwealth Avenue, abutting an alley to Newbury Street.
Got everything.
And I would just simply like to associate my comments with those of the previous speakers in opposition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chris, just to let you know that over the years, we've seen many projects come in through the Talanian companies, and, you know, it's always been able, we've always been able to work things out. So is there any comment that you wanted to make to close off this part of the testimony?
I, I would. A lot of the reasons for opposition had to do with specific restaurant operations. There are many, many more opportunities for the, both the neighborhood and the butters to voice their opposition to restaurant operations. They have, a potential tenant would have to go back before the neighborhood for anything architecture-related, for instance, to put in a vent. Smoke, I heard, was an issue. They would have to go before the neighborhood a third time to get a takeout license. There are many bites of the apple that the neighborhood gets to shut down a restaurant use. I'm not-
Yeah, and, and just so that you know, Kai, because I'm, again, in a state, this is your first time here.
I've been here many times. I have not been sitting at this table many times.
I understand.
I have been here many times.
But the, the thing is that if you take a thoughtful look into your proposal, if you come in with the proposed restaurant use, attach the takeout use, there's ways of making the process far more efficient, okay? So given this information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I assume that's without prejudice.
Uh, no, it's denial for this empty space concept. If you come in with a concept, with a, with a layout, with a rest, an operator, et cetera, that's a different application.
Have you accepted that for years?
That's a different application.
That's a completely different application.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 784-891, 338 Meridian Street. This is interior renovations, extend living area into the basement for new unit and change occupancy from a three to a four-unit residential dwelling. The violation is Article 53, Section 12, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 8, the multifamily dwelling is forbidden, and Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynch, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioners. With me is Jim and Tina Endicott, the owners of the property at 338 Meridian Street. As the secretary indicated, this is a proposal for complete interior renovation of an existing rowhouse structure, three-family structure located the Eagle Hills section of East Boston. It is located in the MFR district. I would point out that one of the violations that are indicated in the refusal letter is multifamily use is forbidden. That's incorrect. Multifamily use is permitted in the MFR district. We did request relief by way of either interpretation or to have ISD remove that violation. So the only two violations that remain include off-street parking as well as excessive floor-to-air ratio. I provided the board with a packet of information to show the context of the building. In addition to the interior renovations and complete upgrades to the life safety, this will also result in an improvement to the facade of the building. It is a part of a series of rowhouses along Meridian Street in East Boston. We had an opportunity to present this to the Eagle Hills Civic Association, which expressed enthusiastic support because of the improvements that we'll be making to the facade of the building. This building will be occupied upon completion as condominiums, as four condominium units. The units are all roughly around, I believe they're all two-bedroom, two-bath, or a mix of that. Let's jump to that.
Tell us about that basement unit.
The basement unit would be the extended living space for an additional unit. The clear ceiling height is eight feet six inches, according to the architect. The total square footage for that unit is about 1,027 square feet, and it's a two-bedroom, two-bath. There is a sub-basement located below that because the grade of this site actually declines from Meridian Street down to Water Street, so the sub-basement is about five feet, which could be used for some small storage.
Okay, and how far below, how far below grade is that, is that unit, the proposed unit?
So it's at the sidewalk level, Madam Chair. For Meridian Street, it is completely below grade, but it's a full walkout to the rear with the sub-basement actually located below that.
Okay, and tell us about the roof deck.
Roof deck would be exclusive to the upper unit only, accessed by spiral staircase from the rear, no headhouse proposed.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are out.
Any questions from the board?
So there's a rear walkout for the basement unit with a second egress?
So, let's see. So second egress has walkout as well as egress up through the front of the building.
And is that neighborhood context that you're proposing a roof deck on those packets you show, I don't see any other roof decks.
So, I mean, along Meridian Street, there are roof decks. We had a-
Not in these pictures.
I'm sorry?
Not in these pictures. I'm looking at the packet.
Yep.
The context of the name.
I know at 349 Meridian Street, we did a project, which is directly across the street. There was a roof deck that's accessed by hatch.
So is the roof deck creating a violation or not?
Not cited for violation.
Because I don't think, because it's not cited, I don't think.
No, I just asked you to turn the context.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, the parking?
Parking, the requirement, because it's an existing three-family, we're only required to have one additional parking space for the proposed unit. It would be impossible to put parking on site, so we request a variance for one parking space.
You requested?
We, we've requested the variance for one parking space, yes. It is located on a T-line for bus, access to Maverick Square.
Please speak in support.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jesús García, Neighborhood Services. During the community process, they have a strong support from the community and also Eagle Hills Civic Association both in support for this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lydia Edwards. I'm District City Councilor for East Boston, and I just wanted to voice my support for this project, especially noting that this unit is becoming a three to a four without having to add any additional height and working within the square footage that they have. So we really appreciate that effort.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Charlie LaGrasso, 71 Utah Street, here in support of the project, member of Eagle Hills Civic Association as well. Overwhelming support by the neighbors. They're keeping the sightlines all the same within the neighborhood. They're restoring the building. The roof deck was something that we loved about the building as well. Very sensible development with the rear staircase going up rather than a big old hatch on the top of the roof. Very nice development, very well-approved by the neighbors.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the PPI design review.
Second.
You don't want it?
No.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 785-812-86 Princeton Street. This is to erect a three-family dwelling. Violation is Article 53, Section 8. Proposed three-family structure is forbidden in a two-family subdistrict. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient railyard setback. Article 53, Section 9, number of, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient sideyard setback. Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Article 53, Section 56, no parking, proposed. Off-street parking. Article 53, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Diane Modica, attorney for this project, 24 Haynes Street, East Boston, Massachusetts. And with me is the petitioner, Salvatore Latina, who's at the end of the table, who lives at 84 Princeton Street, and Trilla Larea from Joy Street Design.
So tell us briefly what's being proposed, and then talk us through the violations, what's required, and what is being proposed by the development?
Yes, at, at this site, there is a lot, which is 1,875 square feet, and what Mr. Latina is proposing is to build a three-family dwelling on this lot. This is a two-family residential subdistrict. In addition to that, this is sort of one of the, this, this home will be a sort of a companion home to the main house at 80 Princeton Street, which is in your packet, and, which is an historic home, and one that, you know, his family has occupied for nearly 50 years. He and his wife live at 84 Princeton Street, which is a carriage house or a cottage that's attached to 80. But 86 is a separate lot, so he's proposing to build a three-family home there. I did file with you today letters of support from five of the butters and neighbors.
So please talk about the violations, and is, is, am I seeing a roof deck too on this proposed?
That roof deck is for the third unit.
Okay, so please speak to the violations.
Okay. Again, this is a two-family district, however, this is a three-family proposal. I did a survey of 75 properties around the perimeter of this property, four streets, Princeton Street, Prescott Street, Lexington Street, and Marion Street, and of those 75 properties, 30% of them are 23, were three-family homes, 40% are, 30 were two-family homes, and 24% or 18 were one-family homes, and there were several four to six. So actually, that district is sort of mixed.
So the, the predominant character, if I do my math right, is it's a one and two-family character?
Uh, yes, but there are, you know, a good portion of three-family homes, and many of them are on three-family lots that are the same size or in some cases, smaller than this lot. Secondly, on the lot size, there is a shortfall of 25 feet, as you can see, but again, there are many three-family homes that have less square footage, and this project really accommodates three reasonably-sized units, which are very much needed in the community. As far as the FAR is concerned, the FAR is 0.8. This project generates a 1.33 FAR, and again, the unit sizes are very reasonable. We have unit sizes of 765 square feet on the first floor with a patio, and 785 square feet on the second floor with a deck, and eight, and 878 square feet on the third floor with a roof deck. As far as the stories are concerned, the stories in the feet, this is again, a two-and-a-half-story district. We will be three stories, however, we're only 31 feet, and there's a 35-feet limit, so we're well below the limit of height. So in that respect, I think that's a mitigation. On the, the parking, let me just say that we have, subsequent to the meeting with Eagle Hills Civic Association, we have secured parking, off-street parking in a lot at 159 Princeton Street, and in fact, you have in your package there today a letter from the owner, an agreement with Mr. Latina for the use of two spaces on that lot. That's about a block away from where this property would be built. In addition to that, I have also filed with you today my multimedia transit options that are also available in the community and which are growing in terms of use, and as well, a quote from GoBoston2030, which I think supports the fact that this particular project is actually in compliance already with their goal that every household be no more than 10 minutes away from some sort of public transit, because they are, between buses and trains and other sorts of options that are available to them. On the sideyard and railyard, I'll have our architect address those.
So hold on one, one minute. Tell us how the parking is proposed to work?
Well, again, there's a letter in there from a homeowner at 159 Princeton Street, which is basically a couple hundred feet away from this locus, and he has agreed to allow two spaces in his parking area to be used by tenants in this building.
And is that into perpetuity?
Well, it's five years anyway, with renewable options. And that would mean that we would only be looking for a, a one, a one-vehicle variance. However, my second argument, as I have made in the past, is that this particular locus is very close to at least four bus lines. I mean, it's a five-minute walk to a bus stop. In addition to that, it's a 10-minute walk down the hill to the airport T-station. And so, and I go on with other options in terms of online technology like Uber and Lyft, as well as the hub bikes that are actually stationed at the airport station. So if the city's policy is in fact to encourage housing that actually is very close to public transit, this meets it. So I would hope that that kind of resource would help mitigate.
Would the arrangement of the parking lot be recorded in the D?
I, that was not, I believe, discussed with the owner of that lot, but if you think that that's necessary, we could pursue that.
Oh, I mean, I don't know whether you've got that arrangement in order to get through the process or whether it's really going to be made and put to your ass in perpetuity.
Uh, well, it's not in perpetuity, like many lots that I'm sure come before you in terms of off-street parking, as the one before us did, arrangements with other owners of lots in the area. You know, there's, they're not going to do it in perpetuity, but certainly for this particular project, this, this owner is willing to do that.
The, the, the issue is that, and this is what we face citywide, is that our approval goes to the building, not to the owner, and we expect that the building will be around beyond five years. But the issue of the parking just is not, there's, there's no long-term response to the issue of lack of parking, and so more and more frequently, we are, we are requiring and requesting that these transactions be recorded at the registry so that it is in fact, something that is, is there- be recorded at the registry, so that it is in fact something that is there for the life of the project.
Well, I certainly can't speak for the owner at this time, since that was not known to me, and I, you know, that wasn't part of the negotiations with him. What I will say is that we would certainly pursue that with him. And I also want to make the point that because this lot is 25 feet, and because, you know, footage was allowed for the sideyards, the resulting width of the lot is really not adequate to accommodate any parking under the building of any, you know, substantial amount, because even if we could get one car in there, the fact is that we would be taking a curb cut, and that curb cut would make a net loss, or there'd be no net gain for the neighborhood, because they'd be losing an on-street parking. So, I think my argument is that we certainly would pursue that. It depends on how you want to look at that in terms of mitigation, but in addition to that, we do have these other options. And I think the materials that we filed with you today show the proximity of all those bus stops, the proximity of the airport station.
I mean, I get that, and that's true just about almost anywhere in the city these days. So, I think the real question is what the request, you're asking for a variance on one space, which is what you're suggesting, it's because you've got this relationship with this parking lot for the other two. If it's not recorded in D, then to me, you're asking for a variance for three spots, and we can deal with it on that. It just, it either is, it either is part of the deed or it's not.
In the meantime, Mrs. Bazani, did I ask you how the plans were?
Yeah.
Hold on. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jesús García, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. During the abutters meeting, the project received a strong support, and also, we have letters in support for this project, therefore, we would like to be, we would like to go on record in support for this project. Thank you.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, I'm Lydia Edwards, and I just wanted to come out in support of this project, very firmly so, because of what I saw in terms of the process and their willingness to work with the community. Many of the direct abutters completely support this project, but I will give, again, credit to the attorney and to the owner for their willingness to go back and forth with the Civic Association and to meet the requirements of the Civic Association, and also to go that extra step, though I hear about the parking being registered or not, I thought that was an added bonus, that they went out of their way to make sure that they got that, got at least a note in time for this hearing. I do, I wouldn't be surprised if they would go ahead and continue to do what you are requiring of them for the parking. I also wanted to note that the three-family structure is an Eagle Hill staple at this point. While it's zoned for two families, you can see directly across the street that this is basically within the keeping. And I, again, appreciate their, they had initial plans that were rejected by the Civic Association. They've come back with plans that look Victorian and are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. I'm the Assistant Counsel, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
Charlie LaGrasso, 71 Utah Street, member of Eagle Hill Civic Association. We had rejected the project a few months back. They had came back to us with a much better project. Parking was the least of the issues considered at Eagle Hill Civic Association. We rarely like to see parking unless you can offer more than three. We rarely don't like the curb cuts, because you're taking away two-and-a-half spots from the street to give yourself one private parking spot. It's not something that the Civic Association pushes for. The historic nature of the property, the restoration of the property next door, and the fact that they're building within the historic character, those are the things that the Civic Association look for, and I was very happy to see them come back with a plan that suits everybody.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BPDA Design Review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Call the last case of 10:30, calling BOA 775-979. 191 to 201 Sumner Street. This is a change of occupancy from two apartments in commercial to two apartments in new restaurant. Restaurant to be Mexicali Sushi Bar. Violation to Article 53, Section 56. Off-street parking, none is proposed. Article 53, Section 8. Restaurant is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michelle Monica, and my address is 21 Haynes Street, East Boston, 02128. And good morning, Madam Chairperson, Christina Arago, and the rest of the zoning board officers. My client is sitting next to me. His name is Roberto Trujillo. He is a United States citizen, has been in the United States for about 15 years, mostly in California. He's orig-
But tell us, tell us more completely and directly about this proposed use. So, he's proposing a restaurant. How many seats? Is it going to be handicapped accessible? Tell us about the proposal.
Okay, we, this is under the zoning of a small restaurant, which is under 1,000 square feet, and only 20 or less occupants. So, we fall into that category. We have 521 square feet and 20, you know, occupancy.
20 seats.
20 seats, right.
Okay.
So, we, we did our work with the, with the public health, and we got approved. Then when we went to ISD for the permits, we got a zoning refusal letter, as well as a building refusing letter, refusal letter. The address is 199 Sumner Street. It's in the East Boston Neighborhood Zoning District. It's subdivision waterfront residential, WR. And again, it falls under the small restaurant of the code.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The brunt of effort, then in fact, show a handicapped bathroom.
Yeah, okay. And there is no step into the space?
No step into the space or out of the space.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jesús García, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. During the abutters meeting, they received a strong support from the people who attend the meeting, with no biggest concerns about the proposal.
Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, just for the record-
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, again, Lydia Edwards. I just wanted, again, to support this project. What we saw was consistent use. This area is kind of known for having small restaurants, and we love the kind of restaurant that's coming in. And we see that their two apartments are still remaining, so we're not getting residential for, rid of residential for commercial. Thank you.
Counsel, it's good to see you here, following in good, in the good footsteps of Counsel Lamartino.
Yeah, thank you.
She is, for sure.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. I'm the Assistant Counsel, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there exterior work on this, for signage or anything?
BPDA Design Review for Exterior Signage.
And there's a second on that?
There's a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With that proviso, you're all set. Thank you.
It's now 11:33. I'm going to call for any withdrawals or deferrals for 11:30. Are there any withdrawals or deferrals for 11:30? Madam Chair, what's your question?
Oh, yeah.
Let's do it. Take a break, okay? I'm good with that. Nope. Calling BOA 767-754, 26 Bardwell Street. This is to construct a new rear addition to an existing three-family residential dwelling. Construct dormers and exterior deck with egress stairs, and propose three off-street parking. The violation is Article 55, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9. The usable open space is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9. Sideyard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Colkin, Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. With me to my right is the property owner and proponent, Michelle Saltani.
So, please tell us first what is being proposed?
Yes, ma'am.
Second, why you would defer, and what's changed, okay?
Okay. So, what is being proposed is a, is in addition to this existing three-family structure on Bardwell Street, which is a, an existing non-conforming building in the 3F 5,000 zone. We're keeping it as a three-family, so the use remains the same. The lot is about 3,240 square feet, and it exists as a three-story, three-unit building with all one-bedroom units. They're each floor-throughs. And so, the proposal is to invest in the site better for parking circulation, and to do an addition at the rear in order to have each of the one-bedroom units become two-bedroom units. And the related upgrade is to renovate the interior and create three parking spaces at the rear of the site, whereas now, they are used in tandem form in the driveway. So, we were deferred, we deferred in order to allow us to engage in further community process, which I'm pleased to report has been very positive. We had two meetings with the JP Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee. We also had an official abutters meeting, and we worked with our direct abutters on both sides of the property, who are favorable for the application, and we agreed to continue to work with them, should it be the pleasure of this board to approve us as part of BRA Design Review for buffering, fencing, and landscaping on the sides.
So, just, I'm sorry, I might have missed it while looking at the plans. What's the square foot of each, a square foot of each unit? Under the proposed addition?
So, the, yeah, the existing FAR is 2,281, and the proposal is to go to 3,522. And if you look at the excerpts that I passed out, it'll show you the existing and, as well as the proposed. And so, that delta of the FAR goes from a .6 to a 1 point, I'm sorry, a .8 to a 1.3.
Okay. And tell us about that sideyard violation?
The zoning violations are the FAR, which I just identified, as well as the sideyard, which is an existing non-conformity. So, 8 and 12 would be required. We're at 4.5 on one side, and 14.5, we actually further comply on the other. In other words, if you look at the side of the building where the driveway is, the building's being reduced, but then going back. So, we argue that it improves the existing non-conformity. And then, there's an extension of the dormers towards the back, which are already also above the allowable height of 35. And those are the zoning violations.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Brunt of our effort.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Alexandria Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record to support with full support from direct abutters, JPNC, as well as the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council and Zoning Board.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Welpoff Webster, representing City Councilman Matt O'Malley for Jamaica Plain. We'd also like to go on record and support, in our opinion, the applicant went kind of above and beyond in engaging with the neighborhood in several meetings, so we're appreciative of that. Thanks.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. I'm the Assistant Counsel, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BPDA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 753-496, 37 to 39 Deptford Avenue. There's also a companion case with building code, BOA 753-495, 37 to 39 Deptford Avenue. This is to extend living space from the second floor to the basement. The violation is Article 65, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. On building code, this is on the extend living space from the second floor to the basement. In the Chapter 3 definition of a dwelling unit, a unit must be completely independent. Note, the extension of the second floor to the basement does not make it, make the unit independent. Since the stair connecting the second floor to the basement is a common stair, it serves both units. Name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the board. And my name is Roy Rodriguez. I'm a general contractor, and I just came to represent Mr. Antonio.
So, so, there are two issues with your application. Tell us why you deferred the last time, and what your proposal looks like today.
Well, last time I was here, I was on vacation, so that's why I didn't came.
Tell us what's being proposed.
Well, the proposal is like Mr. Antonio spoke to me last time, and the stairs is the second floor. The way they build a house, it has the stairs go all the way down to the basement. And the first floor, you have to come outside to go inside the basement. So, Mr. Antonio want to go, want to do, to legalize this basement with the second floor, because the first floor, you, the stairs go all the way up to the second floor, as you can see on the plan. And plus, I brought some pictures. I'm sorry, I didn't bring everybody one, but I have a picture to show exactly what I'm talking about.
So, can you explain to me then, I'm looking at these drawings. So, B1, I'm in the proposed family room and the bathroom, and I go up the stairs, yes?
Yes.
And then, when I reach to the first-floor unit, I cannot go into that first-floor unit at all?
No, you cannot.
Okay, and then I go up directly to the second floor?
That's correct.
Now, say that I live in that first-floor unit. What is my second means of egress? Tell me how the egress-
The egress is in the back. On the back of the yard is a door.
Okay.
So, you can go outside, and same time, there's a door to get into the basement, if you want to go to the basement.
Okay. And then, looking, going back to the basement, it looks like there is an exterior access directly into this space. Looks like there's three access points. One, to the tenant, to the tenant's space. Second, to directly into this basement space. And third, the connection between this space and the third, to the second floor. The question is, what prevents this from becoming another unit in the basement?
Well, I don't know. This house is, is a side of the house, it's both on one other side. So, the second floor is difficult to spray, because sometime, I didn't build the house. By the way, they build it. And they build the stairs, go all the way down to the basement on one side of the house. And then, the 37, you have to go out and get into the basement.
Now, we don't care about 37, because the applicant, application before us is only 39. 37 might be illegal or whatever's going on, but we just want to know about 39.
39, that's correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
You know, I'm confused, okay? I take a look at the basement plan, and I see the door from the exterior rear that allows me to go down to the basement, and then to go up. And you said to the second floor. When I take a look at the first-floor plan, in that same location, I see a door off the rear porch going up to the second floor, but I see a door that is now closed off the stair going down to the basement. So, what happens is that it looks as if there can be a connection from the basement to the second floor, but it's interrupted by a door, which also means that therefore is independent entrance into the basement, independent of the second floor.
No, it's not the way it is. The sec-
Well, look, I'm looking at the door, and look at drawing A1. Look at the rear porch, and tell me, I see a door. Tell me the door's not, tell me the door.
No, it's a door. You see on the picture- You see on the picture, it's the...
No, no, I'm looking at the plan.
Uh-huh.
Okay? Um, you know, do you have an architect on this? You, you drew this, right?
Excuse me?
You drew this. You do not have an architect.
No, I, I have an architect who did it, but...
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are two choices with this. Either denial, because this is an independent basement access, or give him another deferral and have him hire someone.
So talk...
Greatly drawings out and, and in a way that is explainable. These drawings are not comprehensible.
So, uh, you heard what the choices are. Would you like a deferral and get an architect on board so that they can address your building code violation also? Or should we just take this off, off the agenda and you can come back at a later date when you've sorted everything out and reapply? These are the choices before you. Can you make a decision right now so that we can move forward with this?
Maybe architect, maybe, just like, is the architect, John, sir?
Yeah, from doing...
So he's gonna bring architect here.
Okay, that's right.
Motion for deferral, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and the date?
March twenty-seventh.
Will you be done by March twenty-seventh? Is that enough time?
No.
Okay, motion carries. You're all set with that date.
And, okay.
Okay?
At the same time or?
Same, same, at eleven thirty?
Yep, eleven thirty.
Okay? And just know, sir, this is the last time we'll make, uh, an extension, okay? So make sure everything's clean, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases. Is Claire Channel here?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, calling BOA five five three zero two two twenty-five William T. Morrissey Boulevard. There's also a companion case, BOA five five four six two zero seventy-seven Rear William T. Morrissey Boulevard. This is for twenty-five. This is to replace an existing two-sided fourteen-by-forty-eight static billboard with a two-sided fourteen-by-forty-eight digital billboard. Violation, excuse me, violation is Article eleven, Section seven. Electronic signs forbidden, subject to further review. Article eleven point seven, to no operational information filed. Article sixty-five, Section forty, sign regulations.
Are you going ahead with these or deferring?
I'd actually like to withdraw this one, please.
Okay, may I?
Withdraw both of them or just one?
Uh, just one, twenty-five.
Okay.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is for seventy-seven Rear William T. C., William T. Morrissey Boulevard. This is to replace an existing fourteen-by-forty-eight two-sided static billboard and a new fourteen-by-forty-eight two-sided digital billboard.
Are you deferring this?
Please defer.
Okay.
Okay.
May I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
How many times has this been deferring?
Uh, this is twice, I think.
Probably twice. We're still trying to finalize at the Mayor's Office.
This will be the second time.
No, but I thought we went through, are we, are we deferring?
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
Uh, we have a date of March, oh, April twenty-fourth.
You should probably go later, because you've been waiting...
Yeah, we'll go April tenth.
April tenth, okay. Thank you.
And please know that this is the last, uh, deferral.
Okay.
Okay?
April tenth. Uh, calling the next case. Calling BOA seven four six nine nine seven, one oh, one thousand two to one thousand four Tremont Street. This is Tremont Street Development, owns both one oh, ten oh eight, ten twelve Tremont Street, Mission Hill. The owner is proposing to combine and subdivide two lots. Called a subdivision plan to take fifteen hundred fifty-four square feet of land from two, ten oh two to ten oh six Tremont Street, and grant it to ten oh eight, ten twelve Tremont Street and Mission Hill. The proposed new square footage of ten oh two to ten oh six Tremont will be seven hundred and eighty-six, six square feet. The proposed new square footage of ten oh eight to ten twelve Tremont Street will be three thousand nine hundred fifty-one square feet. The violation is Article nine, Section one. This is extension of a non-conforming use. Article fifty, Section twenty-six, insufficient remaining lot width. Article fifty, Section twenty-six, insufficient, insufficient remaining lot of the, of an existing structure. Article fifty, Section twenty-six, insufficient additional lot area for a dwelling unit remaining. Article fifty, Section twenty-six, insufficient lot frontage width. Article fifty, Section twenty-six, excessive FAR. Article fifty, Section twenty-six, insufficient open space. Article fifty, Section twenty-six, insufficient side yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Cheryl Fanari. My business address is thirteen fifty-nine Hancock Street Suite Seven, Quincy, Mass. Zero two one six nine.
So tell us what's being proposed here.
Um, before you, I am, um, this is a alteration permit. There already is a erection permit. Um, I'm merely moving the property line. The, um, first plan in front of you is the approved, um, plan, and the second plan is the, the new plan. I'm merely moving the property line so that one building will be on one lot, and this new building that's being currently built will be on the second lot.
Now, we were very confused the last time you were here before. So take a step back and explain what's going on.
Absolutely.
And thank you for these clarified drawings.
You're very welcome. Um, essentially, my client at different points purchased this entire three lots of, three sections of land from the, the Boston Redevelopment Authority. He, um, owned the existing building, which is within the new proposed Lot Two. Um, there's a current pizza shop and two different floors above that with tenants. He then purchased...
Please tell us again, so how many units above the pizza shop?
There's two different units above the pizza shop, so there's three floors.
Two units, how many bedrooms?
I, I included a summary sheet right in front of you that includes...
Oh, yeah, okay. Two bedrooms each.
Yeah, two bedrooms, one bath each, and there are two tenants living in each of those units. Total occupancy is four people.
Okay, thank you. And then now the proposed Lot One.
Proposed Lot One will be, um, the entire area next to the existing building, and proposed Lot Two will be the existing building.
And tell us what's on proposed Lot One.
Proposed Lot One is going to be a new building. It is a commercial, um, it is a commercial mixed-use building. It has four floors. There is, um, on floors one through three is three two-bedroom apartments, and on the bottom floor is two commercial spaces.
So you're before us today for not only the subdivision, but for this proposed new building?
No, we are not. Um, the proposed new building, um, plans and the building permit has already been approved. Um, I'm merely here just to move the property line, as I mentioned.
So how could it be approved without coming to us?
It was, it was before you and you did approve.
It was before us?
Yes.
They did come before us.
They did, okay.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
As I, as I mentioned in my last hearing, um, purchasing the prop, initially there was Lot A, they considered half of the lot and the additional lots, and my client had to purchase the two separate parts, parcels of proposed Lot One and Two separate times. And that is why the building was erected on both of those different lots. They, um, essentially the BRA had withheld some of the land for a portion of time until we negotiated the final portion. So at that time, the entire plans were approved by the, by the BRA and then brought before you for the final, um, violations that needed to be approved.
Now, the question becomes, moving the lot line to create proposed Lot Two, what violations does it create on Lot Two?
My understanding is the proposed violations is real, um, regulated to the space that would be now taken from the existing building. The existing building would no longer have, um, yardage next to it or grass next to it.
And, and how about parking?
There's going to be parking in the new building.
That will accommodate for Lot Two?
Correct.
Will accommodate, and it's, it's in the deed?
Um, my...
No, that's, yeah.
Clarify?
No, the, the new, yep.
So the new parking for proposed Lot One will serve Lot One, and it is outside immediately behind the building along, uh, like the rear part of the parcel?
You, I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear that, please.
So, the new parking will be for proposed Lot One, and it's gonna serve the nine residential units on Lot One. And might I note, proposed Lot... Okay, go ahead.
Norman Curlup from NOR Design and Build. My address is twenty-one Half Road Belmont, Massachusetts. Uh, this is how BRA, we worked with BRA to prove, approve the project, that the brick building stay on its own and, and the lots of BRA will have a brand-new building. There is existing parking, wherever you see Douglas Square, that existing parking, common parking was used by the brick building. So the, um, brick building never used the lot, this lot that we have, for parking or any other purposes. Um, it, it took some time until all the subdivision was released, and, uh, BRA Legal Department chose us to go through this route, so that we'll have the brick building separated from the new, as proposed and as approved by everybody.
And additionally, um, in the, the back street is an undisclosed street, it no, um, and the BRA actually owns Cabot Street. We, um, negotiated vigorously for additional parking, and they did not want to give us parking, and we believe it is the BRA's intent to actually put a fire lane on Cabot Street. So they're going to be limiting that parking spaces, but they would not grant us any future park, more parking spaces, even though we did request that when we were in the negotiations to purchase the building.
Okay. Um, so, Mr. Bizani, just to put it on the record, how are the plans?
Um, I, I have a fundamental question firstly.
Yeah?
Doug, if you pass this out, uh...
Last time we were here, there was...
Who's the actual architect involved? Are you the architect?
I'm the architect, record now.
Okay, who was?
Um, who was, uh, the AE company, RJ Farah Engineering.
Of the architect.
Okay. So, so, so you're, these elevations are...
They're his design.
Pardon?
They're his design.
The design did not change whatever was something you want approved.
Okay.
This brought me in the construction administration.
Okay, okay. So in, in that sense, with the supplementation of the drawings and, uh, photographs that Mrs. Stefanoff submitted, the lines are out.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Josh McFadden, we'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Calling the last case. Counsel, are you moving forward? The last case?
The interpretation?
I have a...
That's, um...
I'm gonna call it in for the record.
Do you want to call it as well?
I'm gonna call it in for the record. Calling BOA seven eight nine eight seven two, one forty-four to one forty-six Maverick Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, twelve, uh, two forty-five Sumner Street, Spots, on behalf of the petitioner, Linear Retail Number Nineteen LLC and Linear Retail Number Twenty-one LLC. I've submitted a request to the board to request a deferral of this hearing.
It's being livestreamed, so there is just no need for that, okay? Go ahead, sorry.
Sorry. Um, our request has been submitted to the board to defer action on this matter until March sixth. Time is of the essence, uh, and we do reserve all rights under the petition. Uh, we have had an opportunity to meet with the staff of the Boston Landmarks Commission, and, uh, we believe we have an opportunity to try to resolve this without a further hearing, uh, so we'd like to at least attempt that, and we think by March sixth, we could have some good movement on this.
May I have a motion, please?
I think a motion for deferral, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It'll be March sixth.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, the last, last, uh, things to be heard today are the recommendations from the Subcommittee of, uh, one eighteen, two thousand eighteen. Calling the first case, BOA seven five nine three five eight, eight Wyman Street. There's additional dwelling units insufficient, um, floor-to-air ratio, it was approved, confirmed occupancy as a single family. Calling the next case, BOA seven seven two four seven six nine Saywood Street. It was to confirm occupancy as a one family, changed to two-family, renovate the first floor, it was approved. BOA seven seven one two seven eight two Elm Lawn. Uh, it was the parking spaces for two vehicles. It was approved with BPDA and no front yard parking. At BOA seven seven three one nine three one fourteen Milton Street, it was approved. It was to remove and replace nineteen square of wood siding and new vinyl siding. BOA seven seven six two nine five sixty-one Nelson Street was a combined lot to sixty-one for a one-family to a two-family dwelling and construct an addition. It was also approved. Central Street, missed that one. Uh, BOA seven seven six three zero nine one thirty Central Avenue was to convert a one-family dwelling into a two-family. It was approved. BOA seven six four seven three five nineteen Pinewood, uh, was a no-show. It was denied without prejudice. BOA seven six 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 one three one oh nine Beach Street is to change hip and gable roof to match the opposite side. It was approved with BPDA. BOA seven seven three nine six four one forty-five Corey Street was deferred. We have a date on that. BOA seven seven two six five one seventy Dornell Street was approved with BPDA. It was to add two dormers in the existing house. BOA seven eight three zero four three thirty-two Morel Street was a companion case, BOA seven eight three zero four seven thirty-two Morel. They were both approved. That concludes the Subcommittee meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?